Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The invocation today will be given by, please remain standing, by Mr. Mc- Ms. McHattan?
McCarty.
McCarty. God hate those Irish names. First Church of Christ scientists, please.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father, Mother, in heaven, we commit this meeting to you. Come and reveal your will in every aspect of our life and ministry. And as we discuss the affairs of today's agenda, we ask for your will to be done. Show us your purposes. Enlighten us that we may know how you want us to accomplish our task. We desire your glory and blessing in all we do. Direct your thoughts, words, decisions, and actions towards the right path. And let us stay on track. Let your will be done as we have planned and make decisions. Let us ponder the words of the 23rd Psalms, as interpreted by Mary Baker Eddy, the discoverer of Christian Science. Divine love is my shepherd, I shall not want. Love maketh me to lie down in green pastures. Love leadeth me beside the still waters. Love restoreth my soul's spiritual sense. Love leadeth me in the paths of righteousness for his name's sake. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for love is with me. Loves rod and loves staff, they comfort me. Love prepares a table before me in the presence of my enemies. Love anointeth my head with oil, my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life. And I will dwell in the house, the consciousness of love, forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
Christian, we in compliance to Freedom of Information Act.
I apologize, Josh.
Christian, we in compliance to Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are.
Could you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Harkins?
Here.
Mr. Ames?
Here.
Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Lennox?
Here.
Mr. Stanford?
Here.
Mayor McCann?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Do we have an approval of the agenda?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Hold on. Anybody have any corrections or changes on that? All in favor, please raise their right hand. Thank you very much. Okay, approval of minutes?
So moved. Minutes of April 5th and April 5th, workshop and regular meeting.
Second.
Are there any questions or changes on those minutes? All in favor, please raise their right hand. Thank you very much. Report of the town manager?
Yes, sir. Good evening, mayor council. Good to be here. Good evening, members of the community. A few things, couple of quick ones. It's always nice to celebrate some of our accomplishments as we work. And Tom Dunn, I don't think Tom's here, but what a great leader Tom is. I'm pleased to announce that we are once again named storm ready and tsunami ready. I guess these are deemed by the National Weather Service. But storm ready means that we are following a strict set of guidelines and that we continue to meet or exceed those standards, those strict standards. And have been established by this, by the National Weather Service as a weather-ready nation. And then also tsunami ready, in and along the same lines, saying that we are ready and prepared for a tsunami, if that would ever come to. But that we meet and exceed those strict standards. And a lot of that is through planning. A lot of that is through operational tabletop internal exercises. And I'm very proud to be a part of that team. And then, last but not least, Taylor Ladd, a project manager, and we all know Taylor. She's a project manager in the CIP program, Capital Projects. And she was honored on April 12th by the first tea of the Low Country at their community leadership awards banquet. Taylor was one of 12 honorees and was recognized for her embodiment of the value courtesy. And I would easily say I'm not surprised, having worked with Taylor for the last year or so. And that she displays this in all aspects of her work and as a volunteer in many community organizations. So I'm just pleased and staff's pleased, and I know we all are, in Taylor's recognition. And that concludes my report. And now we'll call for Jen Ray to give our quarterly update on Capital Projects. Hi, Jen.
Hi.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Jennifer Ray, for the record. I'm here to talk about our third quarter of the fiscal year. That was the period that started January 1st and ended March 31st. And as you recall, in these quarterly updates, I focus on budget, scope, and status. And I just want to briefly highlight those items for you. The first one is budget. This is just a snapshot of the budget balance per category through the end of the third quarter of the fiscal year. You can see that we have spent, that's the expended or encumbered. That means we've committed it to date, almost $12 million. This one is a comparison of the total budget on the left. And then it steps down each quarter as we move through the fiscal year. You can see that a lot of these are in design right now. And that's why you don't see a lot of variation. But categories such as pathways, where we have a major pathway project under construction, it is dropping a lot more significantly than the others are. They'll catch up as we move through the fiscal years. This one is very telling. This is when we move into scope. And so we're comparing here the percent complete of our scope from the end of quarter one, quarter two, and quarter three. And you can see in all categories that projection is going up. That means that we are making significant progress in quarter three over quarter two. From a status and schedule standpoint, I just want to highlight a couple of projects. This presentation will be on our website, and it will include, you can go in and see a lot of detail. The stars on the right are projects that are either already completed or are scheduled to be completed by the end of this fiscal year. And I just want to call your attention to a couple of them. On the new pathways, both Shelter Cove Lane and Woodhaven Lane, the design is complete. We're in permitting, and we are waiting until after the busy season to start construction. So those will be FY '23 projects. We are making good progress on dirt road acquisition. Mitchellville Lane, we're having some success there and moving into design the corridor enhancement projects. Both William Hilton Parkway and Pope Avenue are underway with MKSK as our consultant for those projects. We anticipate stakeholder meetings in early May. So those are moving forward. You all are familiar with the big park projects. We anticipate all four of those being through this body for approval by the end of this fiscal year is our anticipation. Last quarter, I was asked about Patterson Family Properties, so just want to call attention to that one. We are doing some archaeology work right now, some investigation based on the CDBG requirements. We have to do an environmental review. And our initial findings showed that there could be some more significant findings. So we're in the second phase of archaeology investigation on that one. We are getting a job order for design underway right now in anticipation of knowing exactly where and what archaeological resources are there so that we can highlight that through some interpretive signage and then just respecting that in the design. Another one to call your attention to is Island Rec Association Capital Projects. Not only will those be finished, but I added a note here, they anticipate returning $50,000 out of the budget that you allocated back to the town this year. So they got the work done for less than they thought. So that's always a good thing when a project comes in under budget.
Jennifer, can I ask you a question on that one?
Yes, sir.
Are you on it? So the Island Rec, not spending the total 50 grand. There's a sign in the rec center that talks about a rock wall that's supposed to go up. Is that going to happen or not with the 50 grand coming back to us? I'm just curious.
I don't know what the budget is for that particular project. That wasn't one of the things that they asked to fund through the $399,000 allocation this year. If that's something council is interested in, we can certainly talk with Frank Soul about the quote for the rock wall. Anticipate significantly more than 50,000? That's just my guess why it hasn't happened yet, because I think it's a big dollar.
That sign's been there for a while. Yeah. Thank you.
In facilities and equipment, we're making significant progress toward IT equipment, software, fire medical equipment, and then also some significant progress in stormwater projects and fleet. Almost everything in fleet is either complete and delivered or will be complete by the end of the fiscal year. The last thing I wanted to draw your attention to is a new reporting tool that we are using. You are all familiar with Airtable that we use for the strat plan, where staff updates that monthly based on the strategic plan that you all adopted. We've created a similar Airtable for capital improvements program. So all of the projects, it's organized a little bit different, so it's project-based instead of strategy-based. But this will be live on our website, where you will be able to see monthly updates on each of these projects. What the work that's being done, how it's tracking with its budget and its scope. So that will be live here in the next couple of weeks. That concludes my update. There's a lot of progress, a lot of exciting things going on in our community. And I appreciate the time today to give you an update.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Out of curiosity, what is being turned up at the archaeological on Patterson?
I don't know yet what it is. We just know that our consultants did the initial report where it showed a potential, like a moderate to high potential, that there was something in there. And so therefore, we're required to do the next level, which is more extensive. And they're in that phase right now. So I haven't gotten a report to know what it is. But it's exciting opportunity regardless, because we always love to highlight those items in our parks and in our community. Okay?
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great report. We have a great team and Jen's a great leader. So thank you. Concludes my report.
Very good. Okay, reports of members of the council. I will be talking to you all during the week about renaming or naming the fountain in Shelter Cove Park after Drew Lockland. Drew Lockland was instrumental in putting Shelter Cove Park the way it is today. Moving the power lines from the front, from the back to the front. Making the Kroger store smaller than it was planned on being. I will send you all the details this week. I just wanted to put a marker on here so we can discuss it at our next meeting, naming that fountain after Drew Lockland. Okay? That's why that's here today. So, you know, I'll be talking to you. With that, reports of the community service. Mr. Hawkins?
No report today, sir.
What's the public planning? Mr. Ames?
Thank you, mayor. The public planning committee will meet next Thursday, April 28th, and have a discussion on the Palmetto Breeze Trolley Service enhancements. That's all about fun stuff. So stay tuned on that. And also a consideration of the e-bikes ordinance, which has been in abeyance for a couple of months now. But also, I wanted to alert the public that on May 3rd, the public planning, I beg your pardon, the town council will be discussing and hopefully approving the first reading of the STR Short Term Rental Ordinance at that time. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. There are no other committee reports. Okay. It's my pleasure today to-
John.
I'm sorry, Alex?
FNA.
I'm sorry. I looked at the good guy. I thought it was him.
FNA committee met this morning at 10 o'clock and had a very aggressive agenda. There were seven new business agenda items. The first was a report on the destination marketing organization industry metrics by Arianna Purnice, and the committee found the report to be acceptable. The second was a report on a to-be-established home safety and repair program. Third, a sewer connection program. Fourth was a recommendation to extend the maturity date of the real estate transfer fee. The fifth, a recommendation on funding assistance for the South Island Dredging Association for the dredge of the Harbertown Yacht Basin. And the sixth, recommendation on increasing billing for ambulance services. And those recommendations will come to town council in anticipation of the May meeting. And lastly, was a report by John Troyer on a conference call that the town had with Moody's Rating Agency. And it was a follow-up to a contact Moody had with us about two years ago, shortly after the pandemic hit, where they put all coastal communities on credit watch. And the follow-up conference call reviewed financials from fiscal 2020, fiscal '21, and year-to-date, March 30th, 2022. And the call was all positive.
Good job, Tom. Good job, John. Okay, anybody else? Okay. I'd like to call up now Jesse Chapman and Aaron Hall. Are they here? David, I'd like you to join us too, okay? If you don't mind?
I'd be happy to. You know, I'm thrilled to do this, but sad and at the same time. So it's a double sword along the way here. Whereas a South, whereas South Carolina future prosperity is dependent upon nurturing of a healthy development of our 1,000,001 children residing in diverse communities in our state. Whereas all children deserve to have a safe, stable, nurturing home and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. Whereas in fiscal year 2021, there were 8,949 children. Found investigations of child treatment in South Carolina. Whereas child abuse is a public health issue with serious social consequences as the data shows the link between abuse and neglect of children in a wide range of costly medical, emotional, philosophical, and behavioral issues into adulthood. Whereas preventing child abuse must be a priority that requires individuals, families, youth-serving organizations, faith organizations, businesses, government groups, agencies, and everyone who makes up our community to support the physical, emotional, and education development of our children and their families. And whereas the fact that children abuse prevention exists in the communities that provide parents with social support, knowledge of parenting and children development, and resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children to ensure their development into full-grown potential. Now, therefore, I, therefore, the town of Hilton Head Island, in conjunction with the Hopeful Horizon Children Abuse Prevention Association and a support services program around the state, designate the month of April as Children Abuse Prevention Month throughout the town and encourage all South Carolinians to dedicate themselves to the protection and quality of life for their children. Therefore, the town of Hilton Head Island, I declare April 19th the Year of All-Law 2001 Town Abuse Month. Thank you very, very much. Thank you very, very much.
I've served on that board for over 20 years in one capacity or another and feel very strongly about its mission. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dave. Well, you do. Okay. Krista, appearance by citizens?
Yes, sir. We have two people signed up today, the first being Mary Johnson.
Please come up to the dais, please. Yes, ma'am.
Mary Johnson, 70 Shipyard Drive. First one question. Are the gated communities going to be involved in the proposal for the short-term rental program? That's under consideration.
It's a one-word answer, so we'll answer it yes.
Okay. I have a statement drafted by my husband, who is still on the golf course, that I'd like to read to you. And of course, he texted it, so it's very small. Bear with me here, okay? As an owner of property in the Shipyard Regime for 14 years, I want to speak on behalf of owners who are not full-time residents of South Carolina. Initially, unlike my home state of Ohio, South Carolina charges non-residents real estate taxes that are 50% higher than residents. So as a starting point, we are paying more than our fair share of real estate taxes. We don't use the schools and we don't use the roads. We don't use the schools and we use the roads less than full-time residents. When it comes to security, to police random acts of rowdiness, which is what this new ordinance seems to be designed to address, the Shipyard Regime, where our property is located, spends approximately $1.4 million annually to address this sort of problem. As an owner, my share of that is about $500 per year. Owners within Shipyard fund its security team. If there's a problem, Shipyard polices itself. Shipyard informs its owners of what is expected from them and renters. For example, a quiet time is imposed from 10 to 7:00. Other regimes on the island also have their own security. Roughly 2/3 of the island is contained within regimes or plantations. The regimes in some are way ahead on the issue of security and making sure rowdy tenants are minimized. For properties outside of plantations, acts of rowdiness can and should be handled by the sheriff. If a particular property has repeated violations, existing law would allow a prosecutor to bring a charge of operating a public nuisance. The proposed ordinance is unnecessary and seems to be simply adding another tax to out-of-state owners. Obviously, my husband's insuring. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Krista?
Sir, next we- Next, we have Mr. Skip Hoagland.
Ms. Hogan?
Krista, do not start the clock yet, please. Three hours earlier, I'm sorry. I'm going to make a statement. I'm going to make a statement. I don't want the clock started up. I want my three minutes, but I want to make a statement. I want to ask you how you're going to fix the last finance meeting. I'm sorry. Let me read my statement right here. So Krista, don't start the clock. So three hours earlier, at the finance committee meeting, Chairman Tom Lennox violated the meeting and public comment on the Jeddah item number G. He cut me off, disrespected public comment, and even interrupted my comments and violated my First Amendment rights. Alex Brown is the only councilman that had respect and stayed and let me read my speech to an empty room, and I appreciate that, Alex. You're a good man. I want to finish this comment right now that I was disrespected and violated on to you, Mr. Lennox. And then after that, I want to read my town council public meeting according to my rights today, but I'd like that respect. So, Mr. Lennox, if you can tell everyone in this room why you rudely violated the finance committee agenda, you violated the meeting, you violated the agenda, and if you can't, and you're not going to tell me how you're going to fix it, what you're going to do to respect me, what you did to me, and anybody else in this room that wants to make, that stand up and speak up on the corruption, I will proceed with this comment that I was going to make to you that you stopped me on making, and then I will proceed to my public comment statement. Now, can you tell me why you did that? Why you violated the meeting? Do you, can you tell that to everybody in this room right now? Come on.
Just keep going, Ms. Hogan.
You have the audacity and the rudeness to interrupt me and cut me and walk out, and Alex stayed, but now you won't explain to everybody why you did that? Okay. So you're not going to do it. So now, if that's the case, and you're not going to tell me how you're going to fix what you did to me and that disrespected violation, I'm going to read that comment right now that I was deprived of, and then I'm going to read my next three-minute comment. And if you're going to try to stop me, we're going to have a problem. Mr. Lennox, your Town of Hilton Head Financial Update Report is a lie and a criminal fraud, and so is this chamber. This council is allowing and endorsing the hiring of Green Finney as auditors of the Town of Hilton Head, led by Town Manager Orlando Lawyer Gruber, both caught committing illegal acts with the town CPA John Troyer and lying fraudster and chairman Tom Lennox in tow. You call this a positive independent audit. This could not be further from the truth. This is not an external independent financial audit. It's an internal audit hired by the town crooks and paid with town tax funds to hide and cheat all of us taxpayers. This audit only shows town crooks what they want us to see. Only a true independent external forensic audit shows the real numbers on how and where tax funds were legally, illegally wasted. People are often confused about the difference between a financial statement and an audit prepared by insiders and a detailed external audit. The Green Finney audit does not analyze every transaction or look for fraud specifically. I called Green Finney, and they agreed with my assessment. A forensic audit, on the other hand, is conducted by a forensic accounting expert specifically designed to uncover fraud, waste, embezzlement, illegal use, and issue of tax funds, which we already caught you and this town already committing. Mr. Orlando, do you, CPA Troyer, and Tom Lennox agree to a forensic audit today? Right now, do you agree? If not, you have, then you must have something to hide, which sadly, we already know you do. Mr. Lennox, fact is, you and this entire council have been seen, have never seen the accounting prepared by John Troyer, Steve Riley, and now insider bluffing crook Mark Orlando. None of you have seen the accounting, not one of you. Let me help you with a statistic. Never in the history of the entire United States of America has a forensic audit been conducted on a town government, a chamber, a school district where wrongdoing, waste, and fraud was not discovered, imprison the result most of the time. The Attorney General and FBI needs to act on your fraud, Mr. Lennox. Most of you my age simply have no clue about DMO laws, technology, and how we are being scammed by this chamber, Bill Miles and his fraud CPA Ray Deal. What you do understand is full accounting from Bill Miles with all invoices and matching receipts and how he steals and illegally uses millions of ATAX funds. When can we see this under FOIA? Because you're in violation of my FOIA. When are you going to produce the ATAX funds from Bill Miles that he has to give you according to the Supreme Court? I'm going to tell you something. I got a real hard reality for all of you. You're going to be sued, you're going to be deposed, and you're going to be in big trouble. Okay, now, now I'm going to go on with my three minutes that are allowed for me to- Mr. Lennox?
Yeah. Put them on the three minutes.
Don't do that, Mr. Orlando. You're crooked enough. Put the microphone back on and start my three minutes.
Just shut up and talk.
Put the microphone back on. Okay. Mr. Lennox, why do you all keep saying the chamber and Bill Miles does a great job promoting tourism with millions of ATAX funds when this is a lie and fraud with zero accounting and FOIA violation? First, a private chamber local business league is not supposed to do a good job. They're not supposed to be a hired DMO to promote tourism. This is an ad agency and a local media job. A local chamber under national gold standards is only supposed to support local business members like electricians, plumbers, beauty salons, not any business whatsoever as a 501(c)(6) nonprofit chamber. It has zero to do with tourism. Secondly, a hired DMO under national gold standards under South Carolina ATAX laws is supposed to only use ATAX funds to promote and market tourism and nothing else. ATAX Committee recommending funding and violation of ATAX laws and illegal use by this nonprofit chamber, plus the Low Country Golf Owners Association and the Boys and Girls Club. It's not about worthy, it's about the law. Chamber hijacked ownership of the DMO ATAX-funded website to profit. Taxpayers own this website, not Bill Miles. Bill Miles selling advertising to generate his 500, 600, we don't know how much he's paying himself with the laundering and the money and the stealing and his pay package, and who knows? Town violation of procurement bids allowing Bill Miles to rob our community for 35 years with no opportunity for other DMOs. It's time for a new DMO. The town illegally using tax money to become chamber members. You're all chamber members with tax money. That's quid pro quo. How can you even be up here? How can you do this? Town is in violation of Nonprofit Corporation Act law, the town chamber violation of South Carolina constitutional laws. Bill Miles is violating the IRS Nonprofit Code, Ubit, and Tax Evasion. Bill Miles violation of unfair trade business competitive practices against the island packet and against all local media. Bill Miles taking over 1 million of our ATAX funds to Canada from bid rigging, and he still sent his money up there, and you're doing nothing. Bill Miles bribery, corrupted tax returns, fraudulent audits, laundering, embezzlement with his CPA crook Ray Deal. This has to end. Hawkins, McCann, Lennox, lying, committing fraud by claiming they saw the chamber accounting at the chamber offices with these two crooks. You couldn't be any more of a liar. A DMO is an old failed business model, no matter who operates it. Its tourism is generated by technology for free, local search, social media, 100,000 local Facebook accounts, local residents, guests, 70% repeats, independent marketing efforts by local businesses, not a DMO chamber tax scam. They do nothing to promote tourism, and you just can't handle the millions. This fraudulent chamber is run as a for-profit criminal enterprise disguised as a nonprofit chamber to trick our community and even trick the IRS by committing tax evasion. It's got to end. Our community is being robbed blind by this ATAX Committee, this town council, allowing this chamber tax scam to continue. It has to end.
Mr. Hogan-
I'm reluctant even saying thank you.
Mr. Hogan-
I say thank you to Alex, but I'm not going to thank the rest of you.
Mr. Hogan, please get new material. It's getting old. And if you're going to sue us, just sue us, okay? Next, we changed the order of business around on new business. We're going to move with the council's permission, 11E up to the top of the line. And 11E is-
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it's the consideration of a resolution-
I know. Oh, I was going to read that. Go ahead.
Okay. Go ahead.
Of a resolution from the Town of Hilton Head Island Planning Commission recommending that Hilton Head Island Town Council and Beaufort County Town Council work together, county council, in the development of a new long-term agreement that will secure the landfill and recycling needs of Hilton Head Island and Beaufort County. And Mr. Peter Christian is here to provide further insight.
Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, town manager, hopefully I can change the tone in the room for a little bit. And in the name of the broad topic of sustainability, Mr. Ames brought up the Short Term Rental Amendment. There's an article in the Wall Street Journal today on just that topic nationally, how homeowners associations and town governments are balancing short-term rentals in their community. So we're very much on target with that. And in another stretch of sustainability, my wife, who's on the Rec Commission, met with the pickleball club on Friday, and, Mr. Orlando, I'm supposed to extend an invitation to you to the pickleball club to play pickleball.
I'm ready.
Good. So I fulfill my obligation. Now to the main event. About a year ago, the GIC Sustainability Advisory Committee, which I chair, worked to present a resolution involving the county council and the town council to work cooperatively on establishing a sustainability campus south of the Broad and also work on making the island and Beaufort County more sustainable. I've said this to you many times before. The landfill is quickly filling up. It is run by Waste Management. It closes at 2:00 on Saturday, and it is closed on Sunday. A campus that is run by Beaufort County that collects recycling and also allows residents and commercial carriers to deposit their waste every day will benefit all of us. Recycling now is a charge to anyone who drops it off at the landfill. A tipping fee is granted for all waste. There is no incentive to recycle at the Waste Management landfill. It is backwards. That needs to change, and we want the town to partner with the county, and we will be happy to carry the load on that to the county council. We've been working with Stu Rodman on this for many months, and we will continue to work with him. And the Sustainability Campus will also allow us to more efficiently look at residential trash and recycling. One of the reasons why the previous program was not successful because was the length of time it took for trash trucks to go all the way through the landfill and then come all the way back. If we had something that was closer, that was south of the Broad, it would be much closer, much more fuel-efficient, and much more efficient for all the residents and the town. I know that in your long-range plan, especially for this year, this is on your agenda to perform, so the match is perfect. And we're just asking you to memorialize this resolution that was recommended by the Planning Commission, and we will work with you to carry the water. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Christian?
I don't have questions for Peter. And thank you, Peter, for your involvement and fine work. And yes, this does show up in our strategic plan, shows up in our comprehensive plan. I'm just needing to know from Mr. Orlando, I guess, after passing this resolution, would the plan be for the Planning Commission to develop some type of work plan as to how we get this done? Because we're resolving that the Planning Commission take this on, right? That's the governmental body that would be responsible for it. So I just want to make sure I understand the work process. Because I know Peter said that we, and you're not on the Planning Commission anymore, right?
Not at the moment, Alex.
There you go. Okay, so I'm just trying to get a better understanding as how we're going to press forward. And we definitely want to have Mr. Christian's expertise along the way and guidance and all the good work that, you know, his Sustainability Committee has done. But just process is what I'm not absolutely clear on at the moment, okay?
Well, I'll attempt to answer it. I don't have a process laid out and how Planning Commission factors in. You know, typically, especially as you adopt a resolution, I'll go back with my team and put that work plan together. Probably my first phone call is going to be to Mr. Greenway to let them know what the town council vote was and that the resolution was adopted. And allow me some time to get a little up close and personal on this matter, to really see what they're planning, what they're not, and dive into it. You know, I know this isn't our strategic plan. It's not something that I dove into yet. It's for this upcoming fiscal year, so I think the timing works. Give me some time on that work plan, but I'll report that back to you at an appropriate time.
And Alex, under the guidance of the town, my committee and myself are very willing volunteers to carry that message and work with Mark on this. So it's not going to be a burden on the staff.
Okay. Thank you.
And I just have one last comment. There's a lot of reasons why good people don't run for office. And I hope some of the comments today don't deter you good folks from running for office. And I really appreciate everything that you do, and overwhelmingly, the majority of the citizens appreciate what you do and how you do it and how you dedicate your time and talents to the town. And I want to thank you on behalf of myself and everyone that I've spoken to. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much. Any questions by members of the community? Okay, the resolution is in the ordinance here. It talks about the town council in Beaufort County working together in the development of a new long-term agreement that will secure the landfill and recycling needs of the Town of Hilton Head Island and County of Bluffton, County of Beaufort. Any questions? Cover motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please raise their right hand. Thank you very much. Okay. Fact- Okay, factor, what would have been 12A, the reading of proposal ordinance 20-22-11, authorizing the town of Hilton Head Island to execute a lease of four parcels of land along Beach City Road jointly owned by the town of Hilton Head Island and Beaufort County to the historic Mitchellville Foundation Park.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions by members of the council? Or any questions by members of the community? Christian, will you call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
And Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Consideration of a resolution approving the fiscal year 2023 marketing plan and budget for the Hilton Head Island Bluffton Chamber of Commerce Visitors and Convention Bureau as recommended by the Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Are any questions or comments by members of the council?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to tell Jim Flucker how much I appreciate the thorough job your ATAC has done to date on this marketing plan and budget. Well done.
Thank you.
Mayor? Yes, please.
I think this is important to say. The destination marketing plan this year has a strong message for residents to hear because it's moving in a direction where tourism marketing on the island is becoming more and more aligned with the goals of the broader community. And specifically in alignment with the community's strategic plan. A few years ago, I'm not sure that I was as confident that we were in that alignment. But a lot's gone on in the last two years. Destinations International, an Association for Destinations, had a paradigm shift and started talking about something called a cornerstone. And this marketing plan, destination marketing plan that's been prepared, speaks to destination marketing and management organizations have the unique mandate to steward the community's identity, reputation in the global visitor marketplace on a daily basis. It goes on to say, "A destination brand is rooted in the community's priorities. It is common good and a shared value. Promoting the destination is for the benefit and well-being of everyone in the community." What makes this community unique? Are the people in it, the people who have come before us, the stories that people can tell? It speaks to the personality of the community and the character of this community. And the words that this marketing plan has chosen to use speaks about those stories as being necessary to tell so that when people Google Hilton Head Island, they know more about us than the beach or the golf course. There was a resident survey that was done last year or earlier this year, and it spoke about a number of different things, but I think there are three words that are most important, and that is pride of place. To the degree that our tourism interests and our resident interests are aligned so that there is a pride of place, not only for the people who live here, but a pride of place for the people who come here. The chamber speaks about supporting the communities and delivering the brand promise. To provide a positive, consistent experience for our visitors and to support our community, we will develop a brand boot camp and toolkit to support frontline hospitality teams with consistent on-brand messaging. What that says to me is that we're going to create a standard of excellence that we in this business community are going to adopt and promote. But what this says to me, because these are words in a document, is that the town and the chamber have some responsibility going forward to establish metrics to measure the results of the DMO marketing against the town's strategic community goals. And I am underscoring there is a significant difference between the DMO marketing metrics and what we as a town ought to establish to measure the results against our community's strategic plan. Secondly, I think we should build off the community survey, the insights, by bringing together resident and tourism interests with the goal of something else that was put in this document. Ensuring our number one economy is for the benefit and well-being of everyone, everyone in the community. And then number three, encourage strategic collaboration within each relatively untapped segment of tourism activities. We are much broader and deeper than beach and golf, so we should look at recreation, culinary, arts, history, culture, and the environment as opportunities that, in my opinion at this time, are relatively untapped. And I'm glad Mr. Flucker is here today because something that maybe we ought to be encouraging through ATAC's incentives is for these different segments to adopt shared visions of programming so that we maximize the potential of all the individual organizations that are trying to do their best to promote this island as a place to enjoy as a visitor, but also to enjoy as a citizen. Thank you.
I just thank Mr. Ames for translating some of my gullible from the FNA meeting because I agree with everything he just said. Thank you.
Any comments by members of the community? Okay, having heard none, let's bring it back here for a resolution, a resolution to approve the 2023 marketing plan. Christian, can you make the call? Make the roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown?
In a motion. Did we get a motion?
Move the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Support the motion.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Thank you. The next item is a consideration resolution authorizing the execution delivery of an agreement with certain landowners and contract purchases of residential lots in the Sandcastle by the C subdivision and the completion of a transaction described in its agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Does anybody need a description of what's going on here or information? Nothing. Okay, are any questions by members of the council? Any question by members of the community? Christian, make the roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Thank you. First reading of proposal ordinance for the sale of 1.41 acres of real estate owned by the town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, under authority of SC Code Section 5-7-40 and Section Code 2-7-20 of the Minnesota Code of the Town of Hilton Head Island. Does anybody need any description on that for you?
1.141 acres.
1.14 acres.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion by members of the council? Discussion by members of the community? Christian, make the roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Having public comment on the agenda items after each agenda item.
I just said, is there any comment by members of the community?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I haven't got, I'm over the heart of hearing, I'm sorry.
I just said, is there any comments by members of the community?
At the end of the, at the end of the [inaudible].
After I finish reading this, yes, I did.
As long as we never have a chance.
Have you got any chance? Absolutely. Christian, roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
Good. Mr. Orlando, will we need an executive session?
Yes, sir. Discussion of personal matters related to the appointments to board the commissions and committees pursuant to Island Rec Association Board under FOIA Section 30-4-70.
That we go into executive session for the reasons set forth by the town manager.
Second, second, okay. All in favor, please raise the right hand. We are now in executive session. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, raise the right hand. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's, that's one answer.